We will call to order the Ford County Commission meeting for November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Our meeting number will be twenty twenty-one dash forty-two. I believe we have Pastor Kirk Larson, there he is right there, in to lead us in a prayer and then. We'll probably pledge allegiance.
You might have to take this meeting outside.
It feels great out, doesn't it? It was a great day.
Well, Lord, thanks for the awesome day you've given to us to enjoy and to celebrate. We're thankful, Lord, for your loving kindness that is found in Christ Jesus. I pray today for the Commissioners' meeting. Thank you for these that are gathered, that are concerned about the welfare of Ford County and things that are going on in this great county you've given to us. I pray, Lord, for the Commissioners, I pray to be Ashan and Ken and Chris. Today, Lord, I pray you'd give them wisdom from above, that they would not be wise in their own eyes, but look to you for guidance and understanding of the gravity of the issues that will be before them this day. Thank you, Lord, for their service. I pray, Lord, you'd bless them and their family, protect them. Just grant them health and strength each and every day as they serve here in Ford County. Thank you for JD and Debbie. Thank you, Lord, for their faithfulness to this county. And I pray that you just be with them and the task and the things that they're responsible for. Lord, give them wisdom also and bless their lives, I pray. Lord, thank you for all the department heads and departments and the men and women that serve this county. I pray, Lord, that you just protect them each and every day. And sometimes they're in very volatile situations and circumstances. Thank you for the first responders, for the Sheriff Department, Lord. I pray for the men and women that serve to protect this county. Bless them and protect them and their families. I pray for their families, Lord, as well. Thank you for the firemen and just, there's so many people, Lord, that enable us to enjoy this part of the country. So I thank you for each one of them. Thanks for the people that are gonna be presenting things today. Give them clarity of thought and expression of their ideas. And I pray that all that is done here today would be to your glory and to your honor and to the benefit and the blessing of the residents of Ford County. We give you thanks again, Lord, for your goodness in Christ Jesus. In thy name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kirk.
I won't be back. All right, gentlemen, at the beginning we have consent agenda with approval of minutes for meetings. Twenty twenty-one, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine. Also credit card statement for October. And cereal mall beverage application for getting more.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
Motion to second, do we have any further discussion? Do you hear now all those in favor?
Aye.
Next we have approval of payment. The amount of five hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Does it have anything noted there?
Not anything outstanding.
Make a motion to approve the claims for payment. Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have open public comments. Preserve this for anybody that'd like to say anything here from the Commission. Try and limit that to five minutes per individual, fifteen minutes per topic. Final action to be deferred until the next County Commission meeting unless there's an emergency situation. Do you have anybody who wrote the public comment? Nobody jumping right up. We'll move on to unfinished business. General election, Buckland Hospital this year.
Gentlemen, there was three write-ins that tied for the hospital district. They each received two votes. Will need to draw from the hat. I contacted them, agent informed them, and will draw from the hat if they choose not to accept. But then that will be the hospital district's poll point after that.
Okay.
There was Jason Evans, Troy Helles, and Shannon Davis.
Mr. Boyce, can you pull one of those out there for us?
Yep.
Or just look for one?
Jason Evans, I will contact him.
Congratulations, Jason. No, this is whichever of those cases. Do you all have anything under legal counsel?
No, sir.
That brings us to your report, KD.
First item on the admin report is for the M.R. property. We have City Manager Nick Hernandez here to answer any questions if you have any regarding the annexation of the property that we discussed that you have at your disposal. It's been reviewed by legal counsel, obviously, and a resolution has been provided.
Yeah, I saw that.
Do they have copies of the resolution?
I got through email, I just don't have it in front of me, probably to pull up. I got some extra.
I did run those copies.
This is the second, someplace.
Right.
First one where?
Handwritten.
Like we used to do seventy-five years.
Yep.
They're nice handwritten. It was dressed like type.
We'll leave that one down for a while.
City Manager Hernandez, you want to come up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
He's saying, "I'm not really..."
Yeah. It's comfortable in the house.
Maybe under my breath.
I just had a question about the speed at which this came up this year. Did the city call a special meeting for this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You want to walk us through that real quick or make?
Well, the reason for is we have a, on December sixth, they're wanting to do the public hearing for the industrial revenue bonds. And we have to issue that ten days, the notice, ten days prior to that meeting. And so this was the most, well, the most recent County Commission meeting. We could potentially get it off before that December sixth date. And in order to do that public hearing and set the date for the public hearing, that property has to be within the city limits by then, or else it caused a lot of issues because then you switch it from a city or from a county to the city midway through the process, which causes a tremendous amount of headache and additional paperwork that really isn't needed. So the December sixth date is what really drove for us to get it done in such a quick manner.
Okay. And you guys found out about it?
Last week.
Okay.
Yes.
That's, that's what I needed, Kirk.
Yes.
It feels like it comes at us pretty quick. I always give red flags when we come in here and we have short notice on that kind of thing.
Yeah, that was actually from bond counsel last week. They said, "Is that property gonna be in the city limits or in the county?" And I said, "No." The whole attention for the whole time was it'll be in the city limits. They said, "Well, it has to be done before we issue that notice of the public hearing." And I was like, "Okay, we'll get it done," so.
Any other questions? Nick?
I know that you need at least two both yes, I know that, I read that. But I think you'll probably get.
We have resolution number, maybe?
Twenty-five.
Oh, it's on the top. Questions, I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five, annexation of land by the city of Dot City. I second. Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, everybody.
Definitely.
Gentlemen, the next item is also for city dot cities to discuss the Long Branch Lagoon rate changes. Make a motion.
Good afternoon. How are you? Good luck, how are you, gentlemen? Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We are here today to recommend to you the approval of revised rates for day and season passes at Long Branch Lagoon. I'm Assistant City Manager Melissa Point, Daniel Cecil, Parks and Facilities Director, with me today. Just, everyone's aware the city is going to be taking over operation of the Long Branch Lagoon for the twenty twenty-two season. And with these changes, we reviewed the existing rates to ensure that they were still competitive with other similar facilities within the state. And these rates have been the same since we opened in twenty sixteen.
Yeah, as we reviewed these rates, just comparing them with other facilities of similar size in the state, we just wanted to make sure that we were competitive. We noticed that we are a little bit on the higher side compared to everybody that we looked at. So lowering the rates would help us keep competitive with these facilities. And also, we have received requests from the public about how we can handle family passes moving forward just as an option to be able to allow more family members to access the family pass rather than the four. Four has been our max, so what can we do to accommodate that? As far as financially goes, these day passes, we're looking at lowering them by one dollar for ages three and under, or I'm sorry, three to seventeen years of age and then seniors. It would be four dollars, which is five dollars currently. Adults would be six dollars. And then three dollars for groups larger than fifteen. Along with that, the season pass rates would also be lowered by ten dollars, from seventy to sixty dollars, giving us a buy one, get one free rate that we have done, keeping that intact. Four hundred and eighty dollars for four memberships. And then also allowing up to two additional memberships on that family pass for thirty dollars per person. The other change, or a couple of other changes we're looking at would be a morning fitness pass, which is currently at sixty dollars, lowering that down to fifty dollars. And also something new we're looking at is a punch pass. That would give an individual thirty, or I'm sorry, twenty punches to be able to utilize in any of our sessions, whether it be morning, daily session, or a night swim. They would be able to take twenty passes into the facility for sixty dollars, they can have fifty-three dollars a time as they visit the facility. This is all just as we try to continue to be competitive and also provide these opportunities to our community members to be able to utilize the facility, increase our numbers, and make sure that we're utilizing the water park in the best manner that we can. There's also a, an attachment here that shows the rate comparison where you guys do.
I'll just also add to, I think one of the, in addition to being competitive, you know, especially with the recent struggles that we've had with the water park, this would also be an incentive to welcome back our patrons. And in the past, we have not had a family pass, we just did individual passes. So that's where that request would come from, from folks, so that's why we look to it.
Hey, just, just for conversation, I really did like the idea that Manhattan had for a non-swimmer, for two dollars, because I thought, I don't know if there's a lot of grandparents that bring in their grandkids and maybe don't participate. And I thought that was really kind of a neat thing. I know it's not on the suggestion, but I thought that at two dollars, that was pretty nice.
And I think that, thank you for that suggestion. Currently, if someone's a non-swimmer, they pay the full price depending on their age group. So I think that's, that's a great suggestion too, just as an additional incentive, especially for those folks that may be coming in with a little kiddo, so.
What's the, Dan, what's the thought process of limiting the additional family members to just two?
It was just, just a number to, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to stay that way. It was just allowing them that extra opportunity. As you look at some of the other places, I don't know that they had additional, some of them for a certain amount of price. We just picked a number. It would all have to be purchased together at the same time, not allowing somebody to come and, you know, get ten of them and then they disperse them, you know, for their friends and everybody else. That's what we built on with this. We want to make sure that it's staying within a family group. So that was a number that we picked, and I think that's intentional.
And I would agree with that, but I got a good family background. We got, you know, we could have in the day done way better than two extra, so.
Yeah, and I think some of the facilities actually did three, possibly three additional ones. So I mean, that's, if you all have a recommendation, we.
Again, I don't know, you want to make sure it's family and not just giving out to everybody, but but I think you got a family that's got eight people. You ought to be able to get your family in for that deal that you're offering, so.
I know we discussed too, looking, you know, kind of as we have situations come in because since we have a lot of blended families now too, you know, we encourage people to reach out to us too if they're, you know, if they're trying to navigate through this.
Just a suggestion. One other question, the rates that we had before, did we set them here at the city or was that the management?
No, we set them initially when we opened the facility through the, through the Board of Commissioners.
Questions for statements, gentlemen? We got a vote on this again tomorrow night.
Yes, the CCB board will vote on that, so we'll have, yeah. Yeah, so normally we would take that first to them for recommendations, but because of where we ended up with timing, we wanted to make sure, we're hopeful to, we're working on a new site through my rep, we're, because previously the operator had the season pass sales. And so we're hoping on Cyber Monday that we'll be able to launch sales. So that's why we wanted to go ahead and bring this to the Commission, even though CCB will see it tomorrow.
Either of you want to see what our suggestions look like before we vote, or do you think we'll take the vote back?
I'm ready to vote.
Motion to approve the Long Branch Lagoon rate changes. I second them. Motion to second, any further discussion?
Gentlemen, the third item on the agenda is for the audit that we spoke about in the work session. Through some miscommunication, like yonder left. If you have any questions, just let me know and I'll get back to them. You also have the option of tabling, as I can bring the doctor back. We can talk about it next meeting if you'd like. But if you're okay with any, just approve the audit report.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Kennedy McKee Company LLP Audit Report for the year ending December fifth, first, twenty twenty.
I second. Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Item number four is for Rose Ridge Director Chris Swedie.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Bruce.
Before you, I have a resolution to establish a traffic control and install a yield sign at the intersection of King Fish Court and King Fish Drive in Rhine West.
Was this requested from the township?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And John Hobby Walks with Kirk and Michael for the resolution. After, after going out and doing a visual study on the intersection.
Yep. Did you see the rock they put down?
No, I haven't. It's lava rock.
Interesting. Getting yield sign for one house.
But I can't remember, there are four or five lots, there's a?
There's four. Three of them have sold, one's available, so we might get another house.
And this sign will be, this will be erected by county groups and then it will be taken by township after that.
I have no idea where, where you're talking about, so it's okay. Man knows all about it right there.
Yeah, just straight north of the casino, you're off Matt Down Lane. King Fish comes off and then King Fish Court was cut in as a new bull sack.
Mm-hmm. Is that, is that a more bit of a loss?
It was, it was.
Yeah, I know where it's at.
Right into his field. Yeah, there's four three-acre lots, one person bought, two of those, other one sold.
I make a motion. Get, uh, Rose Ridge, Dr. Cross, traffic control. Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is Resolution twenty twenty-one, that. Next item is for Planning and Land Director Melissa Drake.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr..
Before you should be, a resolution for, in the midst. This is zoning case twenty twenty-eleven, or twenty twenty-one eleven. Zoning Board heard this case on October twenty-fifth, voted three in favor and zero opposed. What this is, is two point five acres have been split from under the lower of the acres. And he's, it's half a mile west of Buckland, on one thirty-one road and by the highway.
Highway fifty-four.
Highway fifty-four, yeah. As I said, it's two point five acres of land. He's wanting to build a fabrication welding shop. At the moment, his place is set up on one twenty-nine roads between Outlaw and Cribbo. He's just trying to come close to home, so that he can spend more time with his family. I can't think of anything, it was very, there's going to be also Leatherfish for sale here. But he does a lot of welding and he does a lot of fabricating.
Then you, when I'm here, if you have any questions?
Yeah. In, entrances will be off of one thirty-one, or off of fifty-four.
Yeah, entrances off of one thirty-one.
That was the question.
Good, how's the process been of buying some land in the county?
Yeah, it's been a hard, good time for about three years.
Yeah.
Running down, running down my shops out in the country. So all these big projects have to hold down here, bro. Do a lot of signs, fabricating, you know, work on farm machinery, these days.
You're probably close to ten miles away from your shop right now, right?
My shop is just on.
Okay. I would blame you for getting out of that neighborhood.
Hey, I'm in that neighborhood.
That's the neighborhood you can probably pick up for you.
I've been in it for several years, it's just taken off. My shop's due somewhere, I'm at. I have work is in fast, you know, off.
And his supply, it will be left out where it is right now. He will bring it in. He's gonna keep this area nice and clean to the best of his ability.
I had to jump in there.
It's all right.
The weld shop out there is certainly benefited.
Yeah.
Appreciate what you do out there now. So I would make a motion, let's see, what is Resolution number, is it just twenty-four? I would make a res, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, approving the conditional use permit development plan for the purpose of operating a fabrication weld shop on real property they can describe in the Resolution. I second. Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is for Emergency Management Director Rex Veman.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
You, Rex?
Hi, I'm Hope Ward, staff manager. Do you have permission to send our emergency operations plan out to the state's grade? And the state has said that they are gonna be giving everybody one thirty and a hundred and eighty games on the plan. We've got a new planner in, old planner left, so I've got a new planner in there that seems like differently. And so he's grading it hot off of what we were given, the plan on of what he's being looking. So, and then after we get it back and it passed the test, then have you guys go ahead and adopt it. That's through legal, but this way it's not going to be legal, right? You guys like what we have at hand.
Just to make it simple, gentlemen, the EOP, emergency operations plan is basically our template that determines how we operate during emergencies. So what he asked in front of us is the EOP, so it's not like a single document, one page documents, multiple documents, and then you have annexes that come off of that as well, and it kind of distinguishes who is responsible for it. But we also had to adjust our purchasing plan. We worked through legal counsel that has, to update it, to work for us in our emergencies. So this is something that, it's almost like a computer sometimes, as soon as you approve it, it'll be out of date.
Right.
People change and processes change, but this is something we have to do.
Rex reminds us to.
Yeah, Rex has been, Rex has been on top of this.
And I do want to say that I really appreciate all the department heads and everything that have helped me put this together. I've had meetings with everybody and everybody worked on the plan. It just hasn't been one person putting this plan together, so I really appreciate it.
He's done a great job.
That's a lot of pages, Rex, I don't.
Oh, I've done, no, I've said it several times. It's been two and a half years of my life and I'm ready to get over it. My bad thing is I've been for two years now.
If you want to give any kind of head start, you can go ahead and put a new head start.
Well, what I'm gonna do is go ahead and, they give out new planning plans, but it's, and so we're gonna have people in one of the emergency support functions. We're gonna have meetings every year to keep up on it. That way it's not a total rewrite like it was this time. It's a rough one to go through, all the way from scratch to.
So, so who reviews this?
Kansas Department of Emergency Management. They've got the planner and supposedly they're going to have to approve the plan, which we have problems with because you guys are going to approve them the plan for jurisdiction of the state.
Interesting.
And they want a lot of stuff in there right now as you move apart, but they want the cell phone numbers for everybody and things like that, and it turns out being like last year with the National Guard coming out. I got a call from a captain wanting to know what his marching orders were for Connor Chilton, Connor Chilton. I hadn't even been in the other part.
Right.
That they were coming.
Right.
And then called saying, "Oh, wait, I tell you now." You know, and we start giving them all the names and numbers of everybody. They're gonna start going around being doing what they want to do.
And it hasn't, in my opinion, it hasn't always been that way. I mean, the process used to be a lot easier. They weren't asking to drill down so far in depth for the detail. But I mean, that just kind of goes in with waves and cycles based on the staff that you have in the state and how the relationship is between the state and the locals right now is just a little bit strange. That's the way to put it.
How, how big is their staff?
I like the twenty-five, it'll be a, well, the planning section only has two people, like planning.
That's a lot.
So I'm wondering, is, is this a lot like nine oh one coordinated council?
Uh, it's probably.
Do they actually have authority yet?
No, they, they have authority.
Okay.
Yeah, they have authority. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if I would compare them to nine oh one coordinated council. I think our relationship is probably better than what it was. And plus our, our staff overall with the emergency. And plus our, our staff overall with emergency management, they're just, they're just better at what they do. So the process is a little bit easier for us internally than probably, than probably what it is for some counties. And that improves our relationship.
If there is an incident, it's easy to flip to that ESF number, but at least there's good guidance. It's tailored to our county, so.
The ESFs are emergency support functions. So it's basically, the, the easy way to say is like, this is your lane. So we have like a, a public information emergency support function, a public health, law enforcement, infrastructure. There is fifteen of them, so.
But again, we, it's kind of like building a house. You have the, um, agency administrator, which are you guys at the top, which are the developers. You're giving us the kind of objectives, what you want done. Well, then it comes down to the first responders, the first responders are the contractors out doing the work. Well, now you need the supplies, but if you go to the EFC, the, each ESF is basically an aisle in that store. So you need something from lawn work. You go to ESF thirteen, you need something from fire, you go to ESF four, you need something for traffic, you go to ESF one, so.
So Rex, you're looking for a motion from the board to put this into the state?
Just go ahead and sign off that. I have permission, I have to have a paper signed. It's a paper that could allow me to send it to the state.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to give consent to emergency manager Rex Beamer to send the emergency plan to the state of Kansas for review.
I second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All those favor.
Aye, aye. Thank you.
Next item is for sheriff, Carl.
Sheriff, which aisle of the grocery stores is on?
Rob's going to yield sixty seconds, give his time to me.
He's got, he's got his own meeting.
I know. He's worried about sixty seconds. Uh, so this is informational purposes, obviously, like you all heard from the loss of vehicle last week. Total loss, burned down. And he's got out to check suspect in custody, turned around, I think Rob was there and within seconds they built. Uh, in short, we was able to secure a vehicle the other day. So one of those is, you heard earlier, move fast and get. So that's where we're at.
What, what's it called?
A Dodge Charger. Everything in it.
Yep. So on this, on this one, you're looking at pickup?
No, it's one of those Ford PTVs, I think, is that what it is?
I don't know. So it's PI utility?
Yeah.
So what is that?
It's a Ford, uh, police pursuit vehicle.
Oh.
Explorer, main, we've got a few of them now.
Okay.
They, they bought a few of them.
Yeah.
Three years ago, I think.
Oh.
It's a bit fun.
So sheriff, how, how many people?
Nine.
Two years or one year moved.
Can we figure out what happened?
Yeah, he almost went off an embankment. Suspect vehicle did go off an embankment. And a trooper yelled at deputies, and you hear him yelling, stop, stop, stop. He did stop, unfortunately, the front of the car went off the edge of the cliff.
Okay. It wasn't something faulty with the car?
Yeah. Yep. So I'm looking at other legal means and recouping, obviously, on the backside for the charges and stuffs.
Well, I guess that's where I was. If it was something faulty with the car, I was wondering if I wanted to figure anything out.
Oh, yeah. It'll be.
Insurance claim?
Yeah, we'll turn it over in the restitution court and also our legal counsel. Paying to look into for, uh, recouping on that end as well.
So the person that gets arrested, will they eventually pay this off through like a program?
That's our hopes.
That's why it's so important not to be copped.
Right.
I'm just joking.
We had this conversation. Perception is reality.
That's right.
So that's where we're at. For national purposes, uh, especially where we're at, what's on that purchase?
Okay, this has been for the sheriff's.
So we put our, we put our name on it so that you have some need.
It's a hold, right?
Yeah.
Until we approve it.
Yeah, if you guys will approve it, that would be great.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of, uh, this vehicle from TCS up in.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any further discussion?
Was there anything else lost in the vehicle? I mean, you're talking about.
Everything.
That's armor, weapons, I mean, it's, it's all just out.
Did burn that way?
Yeah. Yep. Put together currently a list to submit to any of the options. Portal breaker, the whole radio unit, uh, Chicago shot one, uh, top six, roller titties, coats.
Anything for traffic control.
Traffic lights. Computer, yep, computer forgot about that.
Damn. All right, any further discussion? All those favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Gentlemen, the next two items are for HR director, Pat Hetke.
Good afternoon. Eight, a few meetings back, Chief Boyd's asked for some benchmark information on our health insurance. IMA did a really good job of helping put this together. I gave you, um, the, the short version with some highlights. And their observations for our plan year right now, um, we just have one quarter because we start in July. So right now we're running at a hundred and four percent of expected, but that's due to paying claims that were incurred last year. So we're doing okay. Gross pharmacy costs are high. We do have, um, a member that is on a ridiculously expensive medication for cancer. So that has already been met and is going to stop loss right now. So, um, that's part of the driver on that one. We get monitoring reports every month. We ended at a hundred and two percent of budgeted costs last year. A lot of that was driven post-shutdown when providers were opening up again and everybody was able to get back in to, um, see their providers. So that's part of the reason why the cost went up a little bit. We also had some, some really high claimants. IMA feels like the plan's running very efficiently. There's very little savings opportunities compared to, to a benchmark plan. National, excuse me, historically, we've done a really good job with our plan. National five-year claim trends are at six point seven percent. Ford counties are at three point seven. They compared us with Western Kansas and some other benchmarking data. And we are very competitive and I'll get into that a little bit more in just a bit.
Did they explain to you what Western Kansas is? Like, is that school districts, is that counties?
They, they used all their clients in Western Kansas. So they have some, um, they have some school districts. They have some larger, like Chief Boyd said, it used to be we would compare with the public employers. And now we are competing with everybody. Yeah, Tria Health, we, um, were very successful. We got back more than we put in. So our investment was fourteen thousand, the actual cash savings and direct pharmacy savings was fifteen something. And then there's some annualized savings as well. And, um, so we keep looking at strategies. When, um, I chimed in when Chief was talking, that, um, fit very nicely with some of the strategies and the benchmarks that we saw. Our plan is, um, actuarial value on the low deductible plan is eighty-five percent. That means we have a richer plan design than, um, book of business, which is about seventy-seven percent. So that just boils down to we offer a very rich plan on our, on our low deductible, well, on our high deductible too. We were right on, we were lower on most, and I'll open it up for questions, I'm just going to go quickly. The, the thing that we were a little bit higher on was family premium. The contributions for family premiums compared to some benchmarks on both, um, low deductible and high deductible plan. But for the most part, we are just right in line or a little bit, um, less. Percentage premium paid by employee, Ford counties at thirteen percent for single, fifty-one percent for family. Western Kansas is eleven percent and fifty-one percent. So we're competitive with Western Kansas. Book of Business is thirty and fifty percent. So we're way lower than the total number of IMA plans.
Will you go back to A and then point D?
Yes.
Where it basically says total monthly premium.
Yes.
County cost hundred and fifty less than Western Kansas for single, that's six dollars higher for family, six dollars now.
Six dollars per month.
Wow.
Higher than the other Western Kansas family contribution. And then, um, we're less than total book of business, but still comparing benchmarking with Western Kansas, there's, um, we're, we're about the same. Employee share premiums, we're right there, one dollar less than Western Kansas for single, but we're ninety-four dollars, um, higher for family.
Is that monthly again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Monthly. And that's on our, on our low deductible. So when you look at our deductible on the PPO with the low deductible plan, we are three hundred and seventy-five dollars less than, um, Western Kansas book of business and seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars less, um, for the families. So again, that, that goes into, our people aren't paying as much in deductible as our peers in Western Kansas and definitely in book of business for either one. So there's some benefit there. That's not always helpful if you have a, a healthy family and you're paying high premium and you never see that deductible anyway. So it's, it's just what your health plan means to you and what you see the value in. Our high deductible plan is seventy-one percent richer. So still even with our high deductible plan, we're, um, we're running a pretty good. And a lot of that is the way we have, um, hardware for vision and, um, we just have some different setups that pay very nicely compared to other. And, and a lot of that is because we're self-funded and we can design our plan, um, and customize it to what we need. So that's, that's a great thing.
I had to know you were here earlier when Chief Boyd was discussing, you know, staff and losing some employee, employees and really came down to a family plan concept. And I know from us, I mean, our focus has really, really been heavy on that individual plan, less on the family. Is there a way to strengthen that family plan to make this more of a recruiting tool for us to get people maybe coming to us instead of leaving us?
Yes.
Based on that?
And, and absolutely, because again, we're self-funded, so we can design, design that, you know, around what we need. Off the top of my head, and I would want to take it to the committee, but off the top of my head, um, for sure, we can do some very deep discounts on the high deductible family plan. Even though ours is a qualified high deductible, um, it's still on the lower end of the high deductible. It's three thousand dollars, um, a person. So if we could do a deep discount, um, on that high deductible because the commission also matches health savings, that would be huge. That would be huge because the county match can help offset that higher deductible. And for the healthy, you know, healthier families that just need maintenance, that premium would be a huge benefit in their pocket as well. I don't think it would increase county risk to the plan, um, much at all.
I, since, since we're probably not very privy to your meetings that you actually have, do you bring in the department heads to discuss how to explain this to staff? Because I mean, they're probably the ones that handle one-on-one. And if they get somebody who says, hey, I'm, I'm about to leave, this probably doesn't even come into a thought of how do I, how do I explain this? Because if you go into a health savings side of it, I, I almost think you need years or knowledge built into it to really have a good understanding of that.
Right, we touch, um, that when we do new hire orientations.
Okay.
And then again, at open enrollment. But when people go to, employees are concerned about their family budget and they go talk to their department head, most of the time it's just, I need more money. And it's not the nuances of what can we do with the current situation to help get more money in your pocket? So it's an education piece. And answer to your question, do I go directly to the department heads? No.
I think it'd be interesting to.
But I'm not opposed.
Right, I think it'd be interesting to see if you open that up to the group and see if they want understanding on that. You know, because I think this could be an area that would really help, especially if you're, you're losing people and we think that we can tighten this up, it'd be nice to hear.
And I think, off the top of my head, every single one that you lost has family. I don't think there was a single, I can't think. They're all family. And may have all had at least kiddos on her plane.
All of them had kids.
So, uh, just, just asking, if you guys don't mind, just of the departments in here, if you, if you think this would be helpful, would you just raise your hand real quick? Just so I can get kind of a map. That's the room.
It needs to go across the, across all the plans.
Here's, so we have two, the low deductible plan and the high deductible plan. You're saying both plans need to have that touched? Okay. So I think, I think in order to do that, that low deductible plan, you might have to see that deductible change. Just because we're midstream at this point. I mean, just so you guys are aware of things like that in kind of the health insurance world. You know, instead of it being fifteen hundred, thirty-five hundred, you might see it go two thousand, I don't know, forty-five hundred or something like that, just to where, I'm not in control of this either. But just, just kind of throwing it out there, like this is kind of how an underwriter would look at a plan like this if we're going to change, we've already started. You know, now we're, now we're modifying it. But I do think it makes a ton of sense to address it. And I don't think any of us would argue that. I think we want the best employers to be the best employer that you guys actually use as, as a recruiting tool. And, you know, time and time again, I think as we talk to you guys, um, on just your, your departments, you know, you're looking for ways to attract people. Sign wars are fun, but I mean, if you get people out of it, that's, that's exciting, but it's, it's one of those things that if you actually sit somebody down and say, hey, why don't we do this and all of a sudden it's a family benefit.
And then plug your sign.
And, and the thing that I, um, believe that you could do, uh, you know, because it's tied to our cafeteria plan and IRS and open enrollment, this and that, I'd have to look at it. I believe because we're self-funded, obviously, we can't change what our premium costs and the claims cost. But on the, um.
Match or something.
Match or the premium side of it, I think if we do a plan change. Match or the premium side of it, I think if we do a plan change, I'd have to look at that. But because it's pre-tax, it might be pretty hard to change the contributions-
Yeah.
-right now unless we did it, you know, completely across board. I'll look into the, the challenges of doing that mid-plan year.
Well, I think, I think from the standpoint of just sitting up here, I think we're open to this because we, we want to make sure we're getting the best, we want those employment numbers up and we want good recruiting.
And the, the good news is-
Retain, retain.
Yes. And the good news is, you know, this benchmark information was super helpful because it gives us insight on where we can do better for starting the, the marketing and the renewal. I have met, Molly and I met with IMA already, and we want to hit the high pharmacy costs hard. Part of the reason our pharmacy is so high is because we are bundled. Blue Cross is Blue Cross, then you use their-
One.
PBM and their stuff. So of course, that's a bit more pricey. They don't have to be quite as competitive. They have done some things to give us more rebate, this and that. But anyway, and administrative costs. We're paying more in administrative costs than-
For Blue Cross.
Yeah. And, and to be fair, it's not only Blue Cross, but it's IMA.
Right.
You know, it's all the administrative. But we can do better. And I will go on record for saying what we pay IMA is very, very much worth it. Oh my goodness. They're so great and they save us so much money. But I think we can do better by carving out, carving out our pharmacy and taking a look at some of, of the areas that we're high on.
See, and I think, I think on our end, I think, I think really what we're hearing is, is just what the monthly amount is out of pocket for the family.
Yeah.
So not necessarily the drug side of it, not necessarily plan side of it, it's more just the cost.
Well, and that looks high on the, when the employees look at their deductibles.
Sure.
It looks high now because again, because Blue Cross is bundled, they, you have your medical, so it's $500 for medical deductible, but then your pharmacy deductible adds another $2,000 to it, whatever, it's a little not transparent. So anyway, we're working on some strategies, but I'm actually getting ready to set an agenda for the benefit committee. And, and I will send this full report to them so that they can start digesting it. Because of course, you tweak one thing, you have to understand.
Do you, do you think that's something we can have back by next meeting that we could actually look at? Like even if we could make a motion on something like that? I know that's, I know that's quick.
Yeah, with the holidays?
With the holidays. Yeah.
Maybe not. But I think we can, I think we can have some ideas and thoughts because I'm gonna reach out to IMA and tell them to play with their numbers. They have all sorts of data things. So I think we can have information by the next meeting.
Maybe action item in the meeting after. I mean-
Yes.
I think it's, I think it's something we want to turn this ship and get-
We need to get, yeah, we need to get the feedback. So if the department heads in here talk to their people and have some honest, you know, we have, we have a lot of employees here, if they start getting some feedback in their departments, that will be helpful for the committee.
Yeah.
Because sometimes the committee's starting this without any, any feedback. There's also several committee members here too. So I think we definitely start that going.
I think the other thing too is with our department heads, as you go back here now, I think say, say that we're gonna look at actively pursuing improvements to this to make it better.
We have to-
If you start having employees that are coming to you and saying, hey, I gotta leave, I'd like you to let them know, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna start down, start down this trail to trying to figure out how to make that part of it better, if that makes a difference to you.
That's, I'm sorry to interrupt you. That's the other thing I would like to tell the department heads, if they get some rumblings and the employees too, if they get some, you know, struggles, employees are having struggles with anything, ask them to come and talk to us. We can look at all sorts of creative things that stay within policy and maybe things that they haven't identified that can help them.
With us having employment numbers down, I assume, because a lot of departments are, there's vacancies, right? That means our plan hasn't really been spent in full. So there's probably some extra money inside that plan too. I mean, there's not-
Maybe.
You know what I mean? Like there's, there, we haven't-
Potentially, there could be.
Been the budget because it's not there.
Yeah. We're down 1% in enrollment. So being down in employees is a little deceptive because some of the departments got, were able to expand numbers.
Okay.
So for example, a few years ago, I think Rob's shifts were smaller. And then he got permission to expand. Not all departments expanded, but you know, some of them grew a bit. We're still kind of small, so it doesn't take too many people to make a percentage.
Oh, gotcha.
But there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of room for creativity and I'm thankful you guys are open to, to those ideas. But yeah, I can help, and Molly too, we can help employees work, navigate a lot of things that they're probably not even aware of that's happening within their benefit plan that they might want to. So.
I think putting out a blast email from you addressing some of that might get us out ahead of somebody walking in and dropping a resignation, already making their decision.
Sweet.
Just get, get something out on the last so everybody gets it. And then maybe if they're looking at another job, they say, well, let me go talk, maybe there's a way I can make this work instead of waiting until they, they resign.
Until they've already accepted.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree. Because it's, I told Rob, I said, eh, this is making me queasy with his numbers going down. And it's not just his, but-
Well, we got post-exit interviews usually. Unfortunately, our pre-exit interview is somebody coming and dropping a resignation letter on our desk and that's-
Yes.
That's too late. And I'm agreeing with you, we need to somehow get ahead of this and, and let the employees know before trying to work towards making it better. And I hope this is the avenue that makes it better for them. Maybe it's just gotta be a piece of it.
Yes. And then, and the sad thing is, some of the people that leave us want to come back.
True.
But we've lost their experience and when they want to come back, there may or may not be a vacancy. And so we lost all that when we shouldn't have lost it.
Send them my way.
That's nobody's-
Yes. So-
Put that on your side, sure. Previous employees, special consideration, something like that.
So with the benchmarking, if you have any specific questions, it's a lot of data. You can ask me separately. I can send you, there's pages of a little bit more detail if you like data and analytics. So I'm gonna send this, I can send it to the department heads and the committee if they like data. But if you have questions, just ask me. Now, we're running, we're running efficient. As far as the plan goes, we're running very, very efficiently, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh-huh. This is-
Was there an action item on that?
No. Nope. This was just information. The next one is an action item. We have the report. The wage and hour investigation is all wrapped up and done. So the findings, we had not much at all. There were two employees when they were overpaid. When I recouped that, I took too much. So in my simple mind, you know, if someone was overpaid $1,000, take the $1,000 back. Nope. There's, there's a law and I'm actually gonna update the policy, policy committee and the policy so that it's a little more clear on averages. Long story short, you have to pay them at least minimum wage and you cannot touch their overtime dollars amount at all.
Ever.
Ever. So I said, oh, you know, been in the business a long time, thank you. They were wonderful, they worked well. So that being said, we had two people that were affected. Total dollars paid back were $483.32. This was done on the last check. The Department of Labor asked me to follow up and they want the chairman to sign saying that you understand that this is a no-no, we cannot do it again, and that it's paid back. So the other thing that we, and there were no penalties or, or fines or anything assigned to this. We also had one other thing that was discovered, which is a little freaky, but we had one 15-year-old work, 15, I think they clocked out 15 after 7:00 PM on a school night. And that goes against the child labor laws. And I didn't pull the time sheets. They have to be, on a school night, they have to be done by 7:00.
Is the city still here? Got a water park right out there with 15.
And so number one, by the time this investigation was done, this person had already turned 16, so it was a moot point. And with the rounding, it may not even have been 15 minutes, but it was apparently over seven and a half minutes after 7:00. So I notified that department and sent the flyer out and we'll, we'll make sure that that doesn't happen again. So we'll see. They said that wage an hour is huge stringent on that child labor, so there may be some financial consequences to that one. So all in all, I will take any questions that you have, but I would like to get the chairman's signature so I can return this to the state and we can put it to bed.
Or that was to have that reimbursement made by today.
Yeah, they, it was paid back on the 12th, the paycheck from the 12th. And I forwarded my documents to the contact already stating that it was paid and showing the bank accounts that it went into.
Okay. Is this, I guess I don't see a motion on this. Is that some simple, just to say I'd like to make a motion to-
Just accept it. Just accept it as the report.
Make a motion to accept the report. Accept the report and have a signature by chairman. All right. I'd make a motion to accept the Wage and Hour Division U.S. Department of Labor report and have it signed by Chairman Tass.
With the motion seconded, any further discussion? Any votes in favor?
Aye, aye. Thank you. You with this one? You with it? You with it, Bill, all right? I've got a copy of it. Are you making the 18-year-old on the channel? Is that pretty interesting?
Hey, Bill, there was a couple of ladies today. And I suggested that we look at some of those.
It's very much.
I deliver 10 is the, the invoice for the membership dues for the Kansas Natural Resource Coalition. And those dues are $5,000. Since I've been addressing that's what they've stayed at.
Yeah, they've increased. We dropped back a couple of years ago, 3,500 for a couple of years with, with lesser grade chicken coming back up and some of the issues that some of our membership have with national heritage area up here. Ask them to move back to the last house. Actually, see on here that Mr. Tass is a member of this group. I'm just a representative of the county as a member of this group. The county is actually a member of the coalition. I would make a motion that we approve the 2022 membership dues for the Kansas Natural Resources Coalition.
I second that. Motion seconded, any further discussion?
Also, gentlemen, coming up December, I believe, the 2nd, 2nd and 3rd. Here at the Newfield, a couple of conventions that are on the floor. We can see conventions that are here. KRC, we have a policy. A lot of all the members there, so social hour and some of the other. I think it's the 2nd, I'll have to check on that for sure. Social hour and 2nd there on the 2nd. Oh, you can make it, that would be great. I didn't see it on the upcoming meetings here, so I'll finish that. Any further discussion on dues? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Next item is the upcoming meetings. We have a C-FAB meeting that will be tomorrow at 6:30 PM at City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Our Thanksgiving break will be November 25th and 26th. We have the KCM Annual Conference, Actions in Kansas, that's December 1st through 3rd. I represent, they, the, I think they call it the medium size or large size counties for KCM along that board. I will be taking over the treasurer's spot on that board at some point soon, maybe a week after. They've also nominated me to be the ICMA liaison board. So that's good for all of us. So I'll be there December 1st through 3rd. We have the Employee Appreciation Luncheon at the Expo, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That's December 9th. Dan, Neil, do you have anything to add to that?
I'm hungry. Victory Electric will be on site to do safety demonstrations for any of the departments or individuals that are interested in watching that.
That's all I have for the admin report, gentlemen.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Lord, your, thank you, everybody.